Welcome. Happy December, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order with a reminder that this meeting is being video-recorded and broadcast, and if anyone else is recording this meeting, please identify yourself now so that I may make an announcement. Seeing none, we shall move forward. I think we'll go ahead and stand for the pledge, and then we can do the rest of the agenda approval.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Fantastic. First up, the school committee has had the opportunity to review the posted agenda that was shared with the public as well of our topics this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lilly. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Hagerty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. We are set, then, with the agenda as it was approved. Is there any input from the public on agenda items? Do we have a student representative report tonight? Does not appear that we do. Health Teachers Association?
Yeah, I have good stuff to report. Last week, there was a wonderful sense of community in both of our schools. The Jacob School held two successful turkey trots, one for staff after school on Tuesday, and another for students in grades four through seven on Wednesday. And after the staff race, everyone gathered at the Parrot for Snacks Conversation and Awards. Thank you to the Sunshine Fund Committee and our administrators, Kyle Shaw, Lindsay Rajan, and Jess Scott, for organizing a really fun event. It was well-attended. We really enjoyed it. A big shout-out goes to all staff for their support, and especially to our PE department, Brendan Fitzgerald and Barbara DeGallo, for organizing and elevating the annual Student Turkey Trot. This year included new awards and a new crowd favorite, the Staff Blow-Up Animal Race. Thank you as well to our Music Department, Andrew St. George, and Hannah Boker-Wickersham, who led the band, jazz band, and chorus in performing for the crowd at the pre-rally race. And at the high school, the day was also full of festivities. Students and staff started the morning with donuts from Donut King, followed by a variety of class activities, thanks to Steph Hilner for putting it together. And the day wrapped up with the annual Thanksgiving Rally, which went off without a hitch, thanks to the coordination and hard work of Tia Falletti, our high school secretary. And lastly, Jacob School staff is really looking forward to meeting many parents and guardians at our first trimester conferences on Thursday afternoon and evening. That's it?
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great week last week.
I like it. Any follow-up or anything?
I would love to say that. The Turkey Trot is one of my favorite activities. I'm so glad that Kyle brought it to the Jacobs many, many years ago. And to see Andrew St. George command of the entire school at one time, just darting back and forth between the students to keep everybody on time was a work of magic. It was really, really great.
I have parents of college students who still talk about the Turkey Trot being their absolute favorite.
Yeah, it's such a fun thing.
Fantastic. Well, thank you to all of our teachers and administrators for making that possible, and all the parents that joined in. Amazing. Okay, we're going to move on, then, to our approval of minutes. In your packet, school committee members, you have found the minutes from the open-session regular meeting on November 17th, 2025. Unless there's any discussion, I would welcome a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Thanks, Lilly. Thanks, Courtney. All those in favor of approving the November 17th regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. All right. And now, I will pass it off to Dr. Duddy for the superintendent's items.
Good evening, everybody. So, we've got a couple of presentations tonight. We're going to start with Ms. Ryan, our Director of Student Services. And she has a parent, I think, with her tonight, Ms. Kelly, who will be presenting on Special Ed Programming and CPAC, so our Special Ed Parent Advisory Group Committee.
Welcome.
The thing was missing, the inside piece.
So, while we're waiting, I'll go ahead and introduce. So, Kristin Ryan, I'm the Director of Student Services for multiple schools. And joining me is Maggie Kelly, who is one of three of our CPAC board members. She joins Carrie, Tiana, and Courtney Burke as our CPAC. And just as an overview, what we'll talk about tonight, generally speaking, I'll go over just special education programs here in Hall. And then I'll turn it over to Maggie to talk about the role of the CPAC. At the end of our presentation, you will also see that there will be a QR code for a survey. We are looking for family feedback around our special education program. One of the key roles that a CPAC plays in communities is to act as intermediary between families and the community to either myself, the Director of Student Services, and the school. And so, that's why we're looking for family feedback, and then we'll continue to communicate any information that we get to district leadership for planning, and then as well as the school. Over to Stan.
Stan and Chuck? Yeah.
In the world of special education, the role changes flexibility.
Maybe that's the problem.
So, whenever we talk about special education for meeting the needs of all learners, it cannot be done in isolation. And so, here in Hall, and many other places, but I'm obviously most part of the work we do here in Hall, working as a district leadership team, trying to build capacity and entry points for all learners in all classrooms. The special education regulations state that it's a school district responsibility to provide free, appropriate public education within the least restrictive environment to the greatest extent possible based on the child's unique needs. And that comes from building those supports within the least restrictive environment to the greatest extent possible. So, starting in August of this year, the district has embarked on professional development for all staff around universal design for learning. And what you see here is just five different highlights for how universal design for learning supports all learners, including those with disabilities. So, you'll see that when you create classroom settings for small group intervention times with multiple ways of instruction, not multiple ways to show how students are learning, what they know, you increase access for all learners, you enhance engagement for all learners, improve learning outcomes, you create greater independence, and you reduce the stigma. And here in Hall, being so small, I would actually say that's a really key component and a real benefit of our community, is that all students are learners within each of our buildings. And that's just a really great sense of pride. And it's when I entered, I'm hoping that we can continue, but I entered that. So, I don't want to take credit for the work that other people have done. In your school committee packet and online, what you'll see here is the site for NOHAC Education. That is who is providing all of our professional development around universal design for learning. And so, what you'll see there is about a 10-minute blog or video, if you wanted to view it, just around what universal design for learning is. Universal Design for Learning ultimately came from CAST, which was the Center for Applied Special Technology. They've been around for over 20 years. And it was really back in the day, you could see by their name, the technology wasn't as available as it is now. And so, they were really designing ways to use technology to support learners with disabilities. But in the district, we have a pretty robust support staff and support programming. So, from the district perspective, we have integrated preschool classes, we have half-day and full-day classes. We also have special education teachers from pre-K to 12. We have one district program that meets the needs of our students currently, and that ranges from pre-K again to 12. That's our Team-Based Learning Program, which is a comprehensive program that meets the students' needs either within a full inclusion or substantially separate. So, it's really just that that program has access to multiple layers and levels of support. We have pararete educators who support our students across all grade levels, school social workers, adjustment counselors, school psychologists, speech language pathologists, OTs, PT, and BCBA. And then we also have the opportunity for monthly consultation with a clinical psychologist, or if we need, her name is Dr. Turkey, we need her more, we can access increased consultation hours, or she will even do evaluations for us. Specifically at Jacobs, we have integrated in small group special education classes in pre-K. Over the last two years, we have looked at our pre-K playground and tried to make it more accessible for students with more mobility concerns. And so, there are new panels there that can be accessed by those who are not yet climbing and on the structure. Again, I mentioned our Team-Based Learning Program. Our Team-Based Learning Program at Jacobs is currently split up into pre-K, and then K1, and then second grade, and then four through seven. That's just where the needs of our students are currently. We have been fortunate enough to bring in music enrichment for students receiving support through our Team-Based Learning Program in grades pre-K to two. That's Kathy Kang. She comes from Presto Music. And so, her role is a music therapist, but it's really to provide music at a level that is accessible to our younger students. We have a therapy dog that comes weekly from Cohasset Working Dog, and then we also have visits from pedics and obstetrician-marginalists. We have, consistent with the UDL PD that we're doing, we also have collaborative professional development between general and special education. At the Jacob School right now, it's around working with Landmark Outreach. Landmark is a school on the North Shore that specializes in language-based instruction for students, and they also have a professional development component. And so, we did reach out to them to see if we could partner to build our programming. They do not have the capacity right now to bring on a new district, but we have been taking a particular course through them, which is focused on the writing process. So, we've had about eight educators, gen ed, special ed-related service providers who have taken that course, and then we're working together to integrate it through CKLA, so that we're staying true to our core curriculum, and then finding those entry points using UDL and language-based practices. We have specialized literacy instruction across all grade levels. That our special education team and staff have participated in professional development specific to OG, to a program called Spelling, to, again, INEP language-based methodologies through Landmark. And those tend to be our three that we're focusing on, so that we're not jumping in our methodologies that we're keeping them focused. We have in-class and small-group specially-designed instruction for academics, speech and language, OT, PT, social-emotional learning in all grades. And then, when students move through grade six and seven, they have an opportunity for academic support classes. So, those are classes that are part of the Unified Arts Program, but those students receive direct instruction on their goals and objectives of their own. At the high school level, for the last two years, year and a half, two years, we have been working towards building our co-taught classes, and we had professional development there, again, so that we could bring our expertise of our special education teachers into and partner with the expertise of our content teachers. So, we currently have a co-taught class across every grade level, A through 12, in English and math, and then it's one science, one history, and I think that's it this year. That's just where the needs of the students fell. Then we have pararete educator-supported classes, so if a student doesn't need a full co-taught class, we do have supported classrooms. Also at the high school, continuing with the academic support classes that started in grade six, we have daily or every-other-day strategies classes, which focus on academic support, specialized reading, again, speech and language, OT, PT counseling, executive functioning skills. And then, again, we also have pedics and obstetrician-marginalists. This year, we have embarked on creating a multidisciplinary transition planning team. So, when students turn 14, they start to, their IEPs focus on post-secondary school. And so, that is our responsibility to help them identify careers of choice and interests, strength-based, college readiness, post-secondary education, independent living. And so, what we've done is we've increased the hours for our PT and our OT, so that we can have a multidisciplinary team at the high school level. We also have a partnership between our Team-Based Learning Program and Cardinal Pushing for pre-vocational work. So, we will have two students. We had two students last year, we have one this year partnering with Cardinal Pushing. We do community-based field trips, again, all working on transition planning. And then, our school psychologist and our speech language pathologist have social skills and job readiness groups at the high school level, again, focusing on transition planning. And then I'll introduce. Hi. Hello. I have two kids at the Jacob School right now, one's in sixth grade and one's in second grade. My daughter in second grade is in the TBL program. She has Down Syndrome. So, we do a lot of IEP meetings, lots of talking every day with people. So, it's nice to see all the support that the school is providing. So, CPAC is, which I didn't know about this until I had a child and special needs, it's a special education parent advisory council. So, it's basically supposed to be for a bunch of parents to be able to get together, if you have children who have special needs, to be able to kind of talk to each other and say, okay, what are you finding, what's helping, what's not helping, what do we need? And so, we've been trying to build it up a bit more. Kristin and I have been meeting a lot. We have Courtney and Carrie, who are also on the team. And so, what we're trying to do is just have all the families, we want to make sure everyone feels included, everyone's getting what they need, and that everyone basically is happy with what's happening in the school system. Yeah, so basically, it's also lots of times trying to get, you know, if we have a big need for kids who are hitting a lot, you might want to find someone who can come in and talk to you about strategies and how to help them stop that. If we have kids who are struggling with using a toilet, you know, what can we do for stuff like that? So, finding the right people to come talk to us. Recently, we sent out surveys, and so, the surveys had a bunch of questions. The surveys went to all the parents who have children with IEPs in the school system. There's almost 170. We only got like 14 people to fill them out. So, we have a low return rate right now. We are trying to get more people to do them. We did do like an incentive, if you fill it out, your name goes in for a $25 gift card. I don't know. Trying to see, but the people who did fill it out are very happy. So, with this one question, there were eight responses, and it says, "I'm satisfied with the supports and services my child received through their IEP." 87.25% were strongly agreed, and 12.75% agreed. So, everyone was happy with what's going on, just not a ton of people. And then, "How can CPAC support families in Hall?" So, educational forums, this is what I just was sort of talking about with webinars, guest speakers, talk about autism, bullying, how to respond for children in families, anxiety related to learning disabilities, just anxiety in general, ADHD, executive functioning, education for others, and understanding disabilities like ADHD and anxiety, use of technology versus paper pencil in education, parent support and networking, community awareness initiatives about children with special needs. And then, your Voice Matters, this is our QR code. So, anyone at home who's watching can participate if they'd like to. We'd love to have the feedback. And that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's really helpful. I'd like to invite school committee members to respond with thoughts, questions, clarifications. Nita?
I have a couple of questions. The survey, I'm not sure if the survey, I know the survey came out, but I'm not sure how far out it went. I know it's just geared towards parents with students with IEPs.
So, originally, there were two surveys. One went out to everybody, I know at least at the Jacob School, it was on the Jacob Journal.
Right.
So, anyone could have filled it out, just to see how you felt about CPAC in general. And then, there was also one that was sent specifically to families who had children with IEPs, because we did want to know if they had any questions, any concerns, and...
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the school could, if we could keep pushing it just to get your goal of getting more responses.
Can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
So, we have added this flyer to our meeting space at Jacobs.
Okay.
So, that's there, and then I'll distribute it also at parent conferences, and it was distributed at parent conferences at the high school.
Okay, I was going to mention that. And then even like open houses, if that's, I don't know if you all had a table there or something like that, but that might be kind of great. Have you, or does CPAC ever get invited into like an IEP meeting or a transitional meeting from the Jacobs to the high school? Or are they considered like an advocate for parents or a resource?
So, I think not necessarily, however. So, a family can invite anyone to their team meeting. So, if they wanted a member of CPAC to join, they absolutely could invite a member of CPAC to join. Another piece to highlight is, one of the primary goals of CPAC is special ed programming, and being there to hear families' needs. And so, it might be that the family, a family isn't quite comfortable going to their principal or their teacher, their liaison, or myself, so they could always go to another, you know, family. So, that could also support a family's participation in a team meeting.
Well, thank you for putting this together and participating and all your hard work. Thank you. Stand at the table.
Kristin, I saw, you know, the huge gamut that your program supports, I guess, from your perspective. How do you, what would be your top three things for this year? Because it's everything from pedics to social to, you know, academic, et cetera. It's a lot to cover. What would be your top three things that, kind of priorities for you?
I think that the top three right now are really working on the universal design for learning and really creating those opportunities for all learners to be with their non-disabled peers and in class or in the opportunity that they can be in. So, that's a key priority. The second priority is, since I have been in Hall, we have not had an 18- to 22-year-old program. So, students are eligible for special education services until they graduate or turn 22. And to this point, all of our students have graduated. We do have students who may require services until they turn 22. And so, that's the focus of building this multidisciplinary transition team, is to make sure that we're preparing students for life after high school, whether that's when they graduate, or if they are less than until they turn 22. And building that program locally. And the third is, I think, everything else.
Maggie, the CPAC program, what kind of teams are kind of coming up at the parent level?
There's really not a ton of talk, to be honest. I show up at meetings, we talk a lot, we try to plan things. And then, I know last year, we did have a virtual one where we had this woman who was living with autism, and she was kind of talking about her daily life and what that means like. And there were, there was at least one high school student, there were a few people on the Zoom call that joined in, so it was nice to see that other people were participating, whether their cameras are on or off. I don't know, I just, the thing that I see too is hard, because CPAC means like it's for like special needs, for everyone to be included. I do feel like in Hall, everyone is very included, so I don't think there's a huge need to make like definite, like, you know, we have a school dance, we don't need a special school dance for kids with special needs. Everyone participates in everything. So, I think just making sure that people know there's a resource there if anyone has questions or they feel like they need extra support.
Awesome.
Thank you. This is really great information, it's very helpful. I appreciate, Maggie, you stepping up. It's huge to have parent volunteers, right?
Yeah, trying to put a face to it, trying to hold on.
Yes, 1,000%, right? People feel comfortable coming to you, or Courtney, or Carrie. Kristin, appreciate the work that you do. One thing I do want to recommend or maybe ask, so for the surveys, could you follow up with the lack of people filling out the surveys? Could you follow up with the guidance counselor or somebody who is sitting in on those meetings for the IEPs or the 504s to maybe get parent feedback from there as well?
Absolutely, that's a great idea.
Just thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. I would just, I just want to just quickly also express my gratitude. That long list of things that you're doing, it is, it is, it is a lot, but it's, something on there is helping each of the, like, students that we're working, that you're working with. And I just want to name that that is a direct correlation. And you made a comment, both of you at some point recognized how inclusive Hall is and how welcome all of our students feel. And I guess I just would like to publicly say that that's not an accident, that happens by design. That starts with your, both of you and your leadership, and then also to our teachers and admin, you know, across, across the whole district, because the language that we use and the ways that we go about educating our kids, that bleeds into the whole culture of inclusivity. So, really grateful. And I just didn't want you to go without hearing that that was not an accident, that was by design. Thank you for that. Great, thanks.
I'll also thank both of our presenters tonight. I mean, obviously, making sure that we're providing a free, appropriate public education to every child on Minnesota, that's part of what we do, and it takes a team like that that figures out how to personalize this. So, thank you for coming out yet another night. Is there a regular meeting schedule, or is it...
No, we have a few throughout the year, and then we have different, like, events that we might try to set up. Sometimes we join other cities or towns that have bigger CPACs. They're usually more involved.
Perfect. Well, people know how to reach out and get ahold and participate as they need to, so thank you for that. So, now, we're going to shift into our curriculum and data update. So, tonight's focus was on special ed and then curriculum instruction and assessment. I see Ms. Capa... I see Ms. Capadon is here and has some guests with her. So I'll let her do all the intros because I'm not sure, I knew who was here, but I'm not sure exactly the roles. So we'll plug ahead.
Good evening. So if you need, I want to quick to reach out, the curriculum in our district has undertaken since fall of '22 and share how IXL is being leveraged in this month to support student learning. Following my few slides, we have two teachers here today. We have Annie Kirley, third grade teacher. We have Faith Martin, fourth grade teacher, and Kate McMartin, eighth grade math teacher. And they're going to highlight how IXL is used in their classrooms across the district. Since fall of '22, we've been steadily reviewing, developing, monitoring and evaluating curriculum across all subject areas, as well as integrating IXL strategically to support our goals. As part of this work, each curriculum review includes a thorough analysis of our NCAS data, IXL insights, classroom assessments, and the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks to ensure our decisions are data-driven and aligned to state standards. I wanted to give a quick little overview of the work that we've been doing since '22. Starting with, you'll see at the top, we've got our phases of our curriculum review process. To the left-hand side are our years and the work that we've been doing. Beginning in SY '22, '23, we reviewed and selected a literacy curriculum. We conducted a pilot testing to literacy curriculum options. Based on the results and teacher feedback, we moved forward with adopting Amplify. At the same time, middle and high school teachers requested IXL for grades six through 12 to address learning gaps and support learning in math and ELA following COVID. We implemented a new social studies curriculum in grades six through eight and began integrating IXL for grades six through 12. In '23, '24, we expanded work to review, pilot a world language Spanish curriculum for grades five through 12, piloting math for grades one through five to address learning gaps and support learning. In addition, we focused on writing composition aligned to state expectations for grades three through eight. We continue to develop and implement our literacy curriculum and our social studies six through eight. In '24, '25, curriculum work expanded to health and PE, physical education, science K through eight, world language and social studies for fifth grade. We fully implemented IXL math across grades one through 12. We maintained ongoing implementation and monitoring of our literacy curriculum. Currently, '25, '26, this year's emphasis is on mathematics. We are reviewing, developing, implementing math pre-K through 12 curriculum. For grades K through five, this includes pacing, standards, alignment and supporting areas as needed with our current everyday math curriculum. In grades six and seven, our current curriculum Glencoe Math is no longer being, is no longer being any new additions. So we're piloting new math curriculum, looking at Envision Math for grades six and seven. Grades eight through the high school Algebra I, II and Geometry receive training to support implementation and instruction in their math curriculum. Additional curriculum work in Health, MPE, World Language and the addition of new courses offerings at the high school, including entrepreneurship fundamentals and career explorations. We continue the implementation of literacy, knowing that it takes five to seven years to fully implement and see the results. So we are continuing to monitor and implement. And IXL remains fully integrated for grades one through 12 in math. Supporting math, ELA and science, we also use IXL for science and ELA in grades six through 12. Just looking a little bit at our current math curriculum review process. Over the past four years, our curriculum work has been deliberate sequence and aligned with district priorities. This year in particular, we're analyzing our curriculum pacing, grade level standards, and identifying areas where supplemental materials may be needed in pre-K through five. For middle school grades six and seven, we are piloting Envision Math. For upper grades, including Algebra, Geometry, we have provided training to support consistent implementation. IXL Math continues to be used district-wide to support instruction, monitor progress and address skill gaps. IXL gives us real-time data and insights into how students are doing with specific standards and skills. The platform helps us identify strengths and areas needing reteaching, recognizing patterns across a class or a grade level, and target instruction in a timely, responsive way. Whether for intervention, enrichment or core instruction, teachers use IXL data to make informed decisions about grouping, reteaching priorities, pacing and differentiation. Research shows that IXL accelerates learning. It leads to higher test scores, benefits all students. It can be an effective vehicle for improving student outcomes when used thoughtfully and consistently. We do recognize that not all students enjoy using IXL. So we are focused on helping them understand its value, keeping them motivated and engaged, and ensuring that we use it as a district thoughtfully without overusing it with intentionality. IXL provides three main types of data: diagnostic data, skill practice data and growth data. The diagnostic data tells us that students know and what they already, excuse me, diagnostic tells us what students know and what they're ready to learn next. This allows us to group students flexibly and deliver instruction that meets them exactly where they are. It helps us plan interventions and enrichments more effectively. Skill data shows accuracy, time spent and where students may be struggling. We can immediately see which questions they missed and why they missed them and what type of errors they're making. We also know how long they spend on a type of question. This helps us quickly reteach conference with students or just small group instruction. The growth data highlights how students progress over time, not just how well they perform on one skill. This gives us a clearer picture of mastery. IXL Data guides whole class instruction, helping teachers identify common trouble spots, adjusting pacing and teaching opportunities. It supports individual and small group instruction, allowing teachers to group students flexibly based on real-time data and reteach as needed. During intervention, enrichment or pirate time, IXL helps us monitor student progress and growth over time. Tonight, our teachers will speak to how they use IXL in different ways: whole class support, individual instruction, and also to progress monitor. Faith will start us off.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us. My name is Faith Martin and I teach fourth grade at the Jacob's School. We're here tonight just to see firsthand how IXL Math supports instruction in our classrooms and we want to share with you what it looks like in practice. So tonight I will hopefully, hopefully provide insight into how IXL supports each classroom and grade level as a whole and how it pairs nicely with our everyday math curriculum and the Mass State standards. So this is just an overview of some of the main points that I'm hoping to hit tonight and explain to you at the whole group level. So my focus is at the whole group level, how we can use IXL to benefit us. So after teaching my everyday math lesson and working through problems in their workbooks, students are able to log into IXL and complete a skill that aligns with our lessons. IXL aligns directly to the Massachusetts State Standards and our everyday math curriculum skill plans. So every skill in IXL connects to a specific Massachusetts Framework standard. So when I'm teaching multi-digit multiplication or fractions, I can assign, assign that exact content through IXL. It is an extra busy work. It's targeted practice that reinforces what we are already teaching in our everyday math curriculum. The fourth grade team calls this our skill of the day. And so we are able to kind of send that out to students and I'm able to watch students' progress through the live classroom feature. So, yeah. We go two ahead. One more. Yeah. And so from the teacher perspective, one more, yeah. We are able to, this is what it looks like through the alignment through our everyday math program. So at the fourth grade level, we have eight units and each IXL skill is paired with a lesson. There's often one or more skills for each lesson. And we're able to pick the one that we think has the most value for our students and able to kind of send that out. So they were able to gather more data, not just from what we see in the classroom. And that just kind of guides our, in small group instruction, which the other two teachers will speak about. Can you just go back one person? Perfect. All right. So that live classroom feature that I was speaking about, like I just mentioned, another component of IXL as part of the whole group instruction is the live classroom view, which you'll see up here. This feature updates in real time based on what your students are actively doing in front of you. And while my students are practicing, practicing a skill, I can instantly see who is mastering the concept and who is one of my striving learners who may benefit from that additional support. IXL identifies who may need this additional support once it sees that a student may be nearing that frustration level. So if you're seeing your student become frustrated, we're able to kind of pull them before they get into that full frustration mode and we're able to target those individual needs when they're in front of us. So this is the live classroom view. So based on this, you can see that there are seven students actively participating. If a student is reaching that frustration level or they're reaching that level where we need, they may need to be pulled, they come up as red and that allows us to pull them in real time and say that they may need that extra support. IXL identifies this for us and it lets me or really any educator pause and reteach in that moment instead of waiting a day to review exit tickets or homework and look at maybe a student was struggling and I wasn't able to identify that because I hadn't seen an exit ticket data or maybe it was something that IXL presented that they had not seen yet. It prevents misunderstandings from snowballing before students get home for homework. I can also see where student misconceptions may be coming from by seeing their incorrect answers as well. So I'm able to kind of go in and see where a student misconception may lie and target that in the moment by providing that small group instruction, maybe pulling them off of IXL to give them that additional support. As in any class, we have learners who need different levels of support. IXL lets all students work on the same standard, but at a difficulty level that meets their needs. And I was inspired by that. It kind of meets the student where they need to be. And they are encouraged to either get reinforcement through scaffolds like step-by-step prompts or they are encouraged to try more foundational skills to support that tier-one instruction. Students who are ready for a challenge may encounter those higher order items and this keeps the whole group together while still meeting the individual needs of our students. So it just provides that real-time data. And from the teacher perspective, I'm able to see everyone who's actively working on a skill and where they may need additional support. All right. Finally, the data collected from various IXL features that my colleagues will dive into further, such as the IXL Arena, quizzes and benchmarks, point, benchmark points can be used to inform those pirate time placements at the Jacob's level. This data helps the team gather a current working level for students in various strands that takes into consideration their performance on other classroom assessments and observations made by the two, by the teacher or other educators that are in the classroom. So we're able to use all of those different data points from our everyday math curriculum, from our student teacher observations and just what we're seeing the student, how they're participating in the classroom environment. But IXL does that as well. And then one benefit that I see is at the grade level, I have access to all fourth grade students in my IXL. And what that can do is it can kind of group students based on the real-time data that we have. And then we're able to make really flexible pirate time groupings based on that. That's one data point. So this is an example of, we pulled from IXL and it grouped students from across the grade level and it shows their current working level. This is a current working level for the NBT strand. And the students are then grouped and it gives you foundational skills that you can work on in small group instruction. So whether we're going into a pirate time group or whether we're going into a small group within the classroom, we can work on those foundational skills for students and it gives us that grouping. Again, we can modify those groupings as we need, but again, it is that data point that we can use for pirate time placement. I could continue to talk about the countless benefits that I've seen, but overall for whole group instruction, IXL helps us teach more responsibly, more efficiently and with clearer data points. And now I'll turn it over to Annie, who will share how IXL supports individualized intervention, intervention and support in the classroom.
Hello. I am Annie Kirley. I'm a third grade teacher at Jacob's. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about supporting the individual student and instruction that we use for that. So some of this is some things that Faith has already spoke to. IXL has real-time diagnostic that pinpoints each student's exact level across every math strand and continuously updates every time the student works. So we can see all the time if they are moving up, if they are moving down, if there are specific skills that have caused them to move down or up. This also gives us insight into their strengths as well as their gaps. Because of the IXL Individual Skill Recommendation Plan, each student is working on exactly what they need to fill gaps or build their foundational skills. As students work, IXL adjusts the questions based on how the student is responding. So this could be scaffolding a skill or increasing the challenge for them. This keeps the student in a flow between challenge and ability. So skills are not easy. They're not feeling bored and they're not too difficult. So it hopefully helps with the frustration level. As students answer questions, they are able to use tools to help them solve problems. This is similar to what will be available to them also on a state testing format. So they will have tools down on the bottom right corner of their screen and they can use it to draw pictures, they can write numbers, however it might help. They also can do it on paper and pencil. Kind of depends for them what is the most comfortable. In addition to adjusting the level of assistance to match the learner's ability, IXL provides immediate instructional feedback with step-by-step explanations. Okay, so here you'll see if this were a student who had an incorrect answer. The next screen for that student will show feedback on exactly how to answer the question correctly in a step-by-step format. They also can listen to it being explained to them. And up at the top right corner, there will always be a video which they can watch that will also explain the skill to them with guided steps. So teachers can view actionable data, which allows us to identify students in need of intervention or a challenge. We also can assess their time on task as well as their effort. IXL aligns skills to our state standards, as we have mentioned. This allows us to assign skills alongside the unit we are teaching in everyday math as well as prerequisite or extension levels. If we know there's a skill that they have to have had mastered in order to move on to the next unit that we're on, we can assess it by assigning those particular skills no matter the grade level. Let's see. This gives fast data, allowing teachers to adjust instruction, to group our students, to provide support or enrichment exactly where students need it. We will use IXL quizzes as a pre-unit check-in. We might give us a snapshot of what students already know before we begin the unit and allows us for support or enrichment to be developed prior to teaching the unit. We will use IXL quizzes at times for exit tickets or for quick checks, which helps teachers see if students are mastering that standard as it is being taught. It allows us to catch students before they start to fall behind. We will also use as a pre-test before an end-of-unit assessment, which gives the teacher a chance to provide targeted instruction on a skill or skills before the assessment. So in this image, you will see, this was from our everyday math Unit 2 this year. Prior to the unit, we created a question on every standard that would be asked throughout the unit and assigned it to the students. This particular class demonstrated a solid foundation in the skills taught in Unit 2 prior to even beginning it. One skill that stood out to us for an area of need, we circled there. You will see it's more red than green and it'll break it down by percentage of students that already have knowledge on that. knowledge on that skill. So this allowed us to come up with different ways to strengthen that concept once we got to it. So we knew that was something that was coming prior to that lesson. And that's it for me. Next will be Kate McMurty.
Good evening. My name is Kate McMurty. I teach fifth grade at the Jacobs School. Thank you for the opportunity to share how we use IXL in all grades to support meaningful math learning. In our classrooms, IXL serves as an important tool for differentiation, targeted practice, and data-driven instruction. It is so much more than just extra practice. It's a tool that helps me target instruction and make sure every student gets what they need. First, we use the IXL Arena on a regular basis, typically once a month, or anytime the platform indicates that the students' levels aren't up to date. The arena provides students with a motivating environment where they apply math skills under light pressure. So here you can see, this is data that's given from the arena from when the student performs in their arena. It gives a strand score for each of the five math strands and then an overall diagnostic level. So a score of 520 would be fifth grade, second month. And then, and the students have access to all this in their accounts. They see this regularly, so they're very familiar with it. And then on the bottom, the students or teachers can click on Print Your Action Plan. So if you go... So this one just dives a little deeper. Again, you can see that it has the overall diagnostic score at the top and then the strands listed. And then it has the links for the students to go in and click so that they can work on the specific skills that their performance in the arena has indicated that they are, that they need to strengthen. The arena is especially valuable because it generates scores for each math strand, and it creates an overall math score or diagnostic level for each student. For teachers, it provides real-time performance data, evidence of how well students can transfer skills to new problems, and quick identification of students who may be struggling or relying on chance rather than strategy. This helps us adjust instruction and group students efficiently. These scores help us see not only how students perform on individual standards, but also how they are progressing in math as a whole. Along with real-time performance data, this allows us to quickly identify strengths, misconceptions, and areas that need reteaching or support. So this is also data that's produced by the arena. So the students and teachers can keep track of their progress, their diagnostic level, all the way back to grades prior. And so this is really good to like help identify trends over long periods of time. So like, if you look at this student, looking back to two Februaries ago, we have the data. And this student in particular, like there's some summer regression. And then it's interesting how, you know, quickly it drops after they return from summer break, but then they, you know, get right back up to where they were. So it just helps us just kind of get a better overall look at the students in general for math. Okay. Second, recommended skills are an integral part of our daily routine with IXL. Students spend about 15 minutes each day working on their individual recommended skills. These skills are generated based on what each student needs, whether that's reinforcement of a concept or enrichment beyond the current level, the current lesson, sorry. Teachers actively support students during this time. So with the arena, it's more of an assessment. It's just like a little check and assessment. But with recommended skills, we use this to really make sure that the students get it, so the teachers are available to help. We conference with them, guide their skill selection when needed, and help them understand the strategies behind the problems. Students also have access to helpful tutorial videos, examples, and step-by-step explanations built right into the platform, similar to what Annie showed, so they can learn independently and at their own pace. So again, we saw this from the arena before, but if you click, you can click on each strand, and it'll give this, it'll narrow it down. There's like a huge menu of recommended skills that they can work on. However, this really narrows it down for students who are like, "Ooh, I really want to increase my numbers and operations in base 10 strand." So these are the recommended skills that the program has handpicked for me to master in order for me to up that part of my arena performance. Keep that one. And then when it comes to working on their recommended skills, if they are struggling, and this is also piggybacking on what Annie mentioned earlier, at the top, there's Learn With An Example. They can watch a video. The videos are also helpful to provide for, on Google Classroom for parents and students when they go home, to access for homework. I know I, when I give everyday math home links, I'll also accompany it with the corresponding video, because it's like Faith showed, it's linked with our math curriculum. Also, on the bottom, where it says, you know, "You're not feeling ready yet. These are some skills to help." So there's also two other skills on the bottom of that. If the student's like, "Okay, you know what? I'm really not ready for this skill. Let's work on something maybe a little bit easier to get me ready for this." Next slide. Third, the Trouble Spots report allows us to intervene early and effectively. IXL pinpoints exactly which sub-skills or question types are causing difficulty for each student long before those issues show up on a quiz or a test. This enables us to pull small groups, provide targeted mini-lessons, or assign specific practice to close gaps quickly. After the students work on their recommended skills, we can pull up a report, and it groups students into who is struggling with that skill. So that's what they call the Across all levels, across all grades at the Jacobs, these components work together to create a highly responsive math environment. They help us differentiate instruction, support struggling learners, challenge advanced students, and ensure that every child gets what they need to grow. Ultimately, IXL enhances our instruction. It gives us meaningful, actionable data, and empowers students to take ownership of their learning with tools and resources that support their understanding. Thank you for your time and your continued support of our students and teachers.
And so just to summarize, you know, we, I want to make sure that everyone understands that we use it as another resource. Our curriculum is a resource. You know, our curriculum are the standards. The DESC gives us standards at each grade level. They need to master them and have proficiency in. All the curriculum that we purchase and use, they are resources. And our teachers make the decisions that they think is in the best interest of the students who are in front of them based on the data. So they are the ones, the experts in the classroom, who make those decisions to support all of our students. And IXL is one resource. And we are always looking for ways to make sure that we are using it intentionally, and that there is a reason behind the use of any tool that we use. And we are always talking about, in grade-level meetings and PLCs, about things that we use and how does it support our students. So that concludes our presentation of a little bit of what we're doing in curriculum in the district, and also how IXL is used. And though we have our elementary teachers here, these are things that I see when I'm in high school in classrooms with IXL. You know, they might use a whole class jam board where everyone's involved in it, and everyone's answering, and the teachers are monitoring their responses. So it's just not something at the elementary. It's throughout our district.
Ms. Caffedana, thank you.
Welcome.
For putting all of this together. And thank you to our teachers who gave your time tonight to be here and present. That was, that was really helpful. I recognize that this is all in response to questions that we, as a school committee, have had, primarily, like if I may, just making sure that, you know, that we're, we're here as, as an additional layer of advocacy for teachers, and what resources are most meaningful for teachers is really, I think, I just want to name at the core of all of our questions, for sure. What would be helpful from us, Ms. Caffedana, if you, are there particular comments or feedback, or any specific questions, or anything that you would like us to guide? Any follow-up comments, or how would you like, how would you like me to direct the school committee to, to follow up with any?
Like for this evening?
Yes.
In terms of your comments?
Right now, like, yeah. Is there a particular question or any feedback we can offer?
I'm not sure, honestly. I didn't think of that. I think, you know, I think sometimes we hear that some families feel like it's overused. And I think we wanted to come here to talk about how it's intentionally used. You know, there are things that not all students are going to want to do. Not all students are going to like every aspect of school. But I do feel like the teachers in our district make the best decisions for specific reasons. And sometimes using IXL in a way helps not only the teachers understand a student, but helps them persevere through a difficult problem. You know, lean in when they don't understand and find the resources to help them as well. So there are different reasons for using our resources. So, you know, I understand if families have questions, I'd ask them to reach out to the teachers, to their student, you know, the teachers who are teaching them every day, and ask, you know, and if we need to help modify or change it for specific students, we absolutely will.
Okay. Well, then, with that, I will invite my colleagues to, to provide any questions or follow-up comments. And I think that what feels most important is that we have the opportunity to hear from you as well. So if, if there are specific applications of IXL that people have questions on, I think that that makes a lot of sense. So is there questions, comments, concerns? I don't know where we want to begin. Lilly, do you have any questions, comments, and concerns?
I'll go for it.
One part of IXL, which I really appreciate, and I have experienced some feedback, is the in-class portion, where there's direct feedback, you know, your students are working. And Faith, you said, you know, you can see in lifetime, like when somebody's having problems, you can pull them or you can go over and help them. I think that is an amazing use of IXL. And I've had a lot of feedback that when that happens in the classroom, it's really helpful. The flip side is when a student has trouble at home, that there are videos and there are explanations. But when a child is having trouble, do they take ownership of their learning in a way that says, "Okay, stop. I need to watch a video, and I need to thoughtfully look at it and see what it's saying"? Like, that's the part that's a disconnect for me is the home part. I think it's used beautifully in the classroom. As a tool at home, that's where 90% of my reservations about this program come from.
Anything you would add?
She said that perfectly. But that was my only reason for bringing it up the last time, is just that disconnect where, in school, it makes total sense, and I appreciate what it does. And this is very helpful to all parents to see what the IXL is actually doing in the classroom, and for our teachers. So I appreciate the presentation. So thank you so much.
Welcome. And responsibility, I would, I would say, if you were hearing that from families, I would ask you to remind them to reach out to the teachers. Because I do feel that when teachers are giving it for homework, there is a purpose, there is a reason, there's a connection to what was taught. But some students, as Trivina mentioned, there's two recommendations. There's a teacher recommendation, and there's just an IXL recommendation. So the teacher could recommend a skill be practiced because it's what was taught that day. Or IXL could say, "Oh, I think you need some help in this," or "I'd like to challenge you." So those, a student might not be able to do as easily at home. But I would be hopeful that the ones that are assigned for homework that are based on the lesson, there's some awareness and there's some practice that will be happening. But I would just, any family, reach out to the teacher if there's any concerns or it's too much. There's definitely some things that we can do to work with that.
Your point is really, is really well taken. Any, like, as always, you're, the school committee members are not a parent's first line of defense if there is a challenge. So I hear that, and I would echo it. What I, and I want to invite my other colleagues who might have comments as well, and, and just sort of name, like, what isn't, like, what I don't want this to devolve into is some sort of a debate about the validity of IXL and whether or not we should be using it. Because what I'm hearing loud and clear from teachers' perspective, it's, it's helping you teach. That's, that's as far as the school committee should go in getting involved in your instruction. So just to, just to name that we trust you fully. And so I'm going to keep the conversation directed in that, in that direction. Anything to my right? Any questions, or?
I'll just say thank you for putting this information together. It is helpful. So I have, my daughters are older, eighth and 10th grade. They did go through the Jacobs School. So, you know, they did use IXL, and one loved it and one hated it. But, you know, every scenario is different. So I think, you know, seeing what the teachers are able to utilize and pull reports, and see what kids are in what grouping, and how they can, you know, help them further, challenge them and help them, I think it's great information. So thank you.
Brendan, anything to add?
You know, I always have something to say. No, I think it's, you know, I've had comments before about IXL. And I guess when I see the teachers and you explain how you use it and what you do with it, I think that's very helpful. But there's a dimensionality to me that doesn't stack up. And maybe it's because of the age of AI, and I wanted to be more predictive analytics on where it is. And we talked, you guys talked about the data and where there could be learnings or things. But I guess, is, how does this compare to other teaching softwares there are out there? What's the cost that we pay for this? And, you know, like, my own son, who's in eighth grade now, he's super competitive, and he wouldn't go to bed at night until he had like 80% or morning. He used to drive me and my wife insane. Probably not a bad problem, I guess, in hindsight. But I guess, like, what else happens as part of the learning experience? When you think about going back to being in college and, you know, the whole ethos of pedagogy and what you want to teach them, like, how does this stack up in terms of what they should get for the full, for the full learning experience?
Faith, do you want to talk about just your research?
Yeah. So I recently did my master's in elementary, at the STEAM. And so as a part of that program, we kind of looked at technology as a whole. I'm also coming from another district. And so the technology piece, and there's so many programs out there. And so I know that you went through a vetting process and were able to look at it all. I've seen many programs, and I think the data you get from IXL itself is fantastic. And I think it's that real-time data. And pretty much most of the districts that I've been, I've worked at, or I've seen have a program in some capacity like IXL. And so it's just a resource in that capacity. And I think regarding, regarding the looking at the lesson as a whole, I can speak to fourth grade, maybe fifth grade, as I taught fifth grade. But I think for a fourth-grade teacher, when you look at that, you look at the Massachusetts State Standard, and that's kind of where we start all of our planning from. And so when you're looking at that standard, you need to figure out what the students need to be able to do. And so in our planning meetings, we look at, in a thinking math classroom, what do you want our students to be engaged in? And so it's that conversation. It's the diving into problems that are based on real-world solutions. And so I think looking at that standard and the backward design, and part of our UDL planning is looking at access points for all our students to be able to meet that goal overall. So looking at that standard is where we start as teachers. And I think at all grade levels, that would be appropriate to say. And then looking at the everyday math curriculum that we have, especially in fourth grade, looking at the curriculum materials that we have. I've been a part of working with Christine at each grade level to kind of look at how the materials align with those state standards, where there are gaps within the everyday math curriculum. And so I worked with third grade and fifth grade on that, and just looking at where, even the everyday math, right, there's, there's different gaps and just different programs that we have. And so we were able to fill those with additional materials, embedding those materials. And then IXL is kind of that additional resource, that additional layer that we are able to use for all students. And again, it's not necessarily And again, it's not necessarily the base of the core lesson that we're using, but again, it's that other resource we can pull from and we're looking for more data points on our students. And then that informs that our pirate time clues. We look at those assessments that we want students to be able to perform on and match is what we're teaching in everyday math? Is that matching with the state standards? Is that matching? Is there a way we can use IXL to kind of build up that area? I think that's kind of us teachers, what we're looking for. But again, this is just another resource that is given to us to be able to utilize within the classroom. So, and I think in many of the other programs that I've used, this is the most up-to-date program that I've seen and it provides the most real-time feedback for teachers and it's constantly changing. And so it just gives another snapshot for our students.
And how it links to, right, to everyday math is extremely beneficial. Another hardly needed show is it will break down all of the standards, the entire grade level. So we know that we haven't been doing really well in third grade on a specific M-PAS standard. We can then look at the IXL data and is it lined up? Is this just a fluke or are we having gaps somewhere and it helps us as educators to realize something's not clicking with this particular standard? And so now we need to dive in and figure out where are those gaps and what can we do to, to fill them? So not only for students, but they're also for, for us. What are we doing well and where are our kids struggling? It's helpful for that as well.
And kind of just speak to the part of your question that was, you know, about the future. I forget how you worded it. But, you know, this, IXL is, it's just one tool that we have to help catch those skills, the sub-skills that students just might be lacking on because math builds and builds and builds and builds. And we really want to catch those, those parts early on. And with the data that IXL gives us for the, for the small amount of time that the students need to work on, like, spend time on that platform, the amount of data that it gives us and the way that it manipulates the data and can spit out different information for teachers, it's, it's so useful. And I think about myself as like a high schooler or college student, like, I, I know I talk all day long now, but like, I was so shy. I would never go to my teacher and be like, I don't understand this. And I was definitely one of those kids that flew under the radar. And there are a lot of kids that fly under the radar. And this is one of the tools that we have to just really quickly catch those skills, be able to, you know, pull the kid aside, one-on-one or a small group and, and just bring them back up and.
And not only that, but when they have a particular standard or a question that they have been struggling, we can pull that exact question up to work if they're, Megan tells what they were thinking. So we can go back to the exact pinpoint where they were and work them, work with them.
But our curriculum is, or the main program that we use to teach them is everyday math. And this helps guide who we teach, how we teach them. You know, I feel like the everyday math is really the program that we look to, to give the kids access to find problems, like, everyday list scenarios. I forget my word.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you, each and every one of you. Is there, did I hear that it stops at a certain level, IXL? That doesn't go all the way through to 12th grade or did I miss?
Our, our seniors are using it as well.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Yes. It depends on the class and how the teacher's using it, but it's available, first grade through.
Can we, I know it's probably data sharing and data privacy and all that stuff, but can we compare ourselves to other towns in Massachusetts or that's not allowed?
Not with IXL.
Okay.
Not the same way that you can with M-PAS. Correct, yep.
I want to, I, there's, I think we have one more comment from Alisa, but I also wanted to address, like, bringing it back to the, the school committee's purview. Brendan asked a, a good question about the cost and the investment. That is something, right, that, that we do oversee. We just had our budget subcommittee meeting and, and I, and I think if I'm correct, we're starting to reevaluate math curriculum over the next.
Correct.
Year?
This year.
Is that right? Next year?
This year.
Oh, this year? Okay. Perfect. So this is one of the things that we.
Correct.
That we will be listening to and.
Yes.
Hearing teachers' voices as well on just what's having impact and, and how we're investing our funds as a district.
Of course. Yes.
Please, do you want to, did you want to make one more comment?
So I think that Jacobs has a lot of opportunities for reviewing pirate time built in, part of your whole school culture and also schedule. I wonder, though, with, with IXL, with, let's see, it would be eighth through 12th, with a very different schedule and, you know, a different way that students are grouped, how do you, how do teachers at the upper grades use the data to regroup and redirect and reteach? How does that work in a classroom? And I know you've got great elementary teachers here who probably can't speak to my question, but I think there may be a misconception a few weeks ago and we chatted about this at this meeting. And it was not directed so much at the Jacobs use of IXL, but how does it carry through the upper levels? And another concern I have, you know, there's, when you show your work, you can doodle with like a blunt finger on your touchscreen, right? Or you could use paper. But sometimes the problem a student has is so simple that maybe in long division, they didn't carry, like, it's a stupid, small mistake, right? But without a tool that requires you submit your rough work, how do teachers find those tiny mistakes that are very easy to correct?
Right.
And like, just fine-tune it. So twofold, you know? How does the grouping work at the high school? And, and the, the work showing, because as, as they get older, students get older, the work becomes more difficult.
Correct.
So I just, I feel like that is a, a real downside to this type of platform, regardless of which one it is.
Mm-hmm.
As work gets more difficult.
Okay. So you're correct. We don't have the same structure, pirate time, four days a week at the high school. But they do have time built in where they can grab students and work with students. And that they structure it very differently. And in the moment, in the classrooms, they might be grabbing students or they might be doing a class, you know, jam where they see the students' answers so they're able to help support students. You know, I've watched the high school teachers walk over and support a student and just give some direct feedback as they're doing what they call a group jam. So you'll see, you know, the question of above, every student is entering it and they'll walk through. They're, you know, circulating through, they're answering questions.
Sure. And I've, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's in-classroom stuff, which is always great.
Correct.
I love the teachers in whole and they always do such a great job in the classroom. My issue continues to be resources that support at home, which is textbooks.
I didn't understand that as your question. I apologize.
Sorry. I guess that was a little bit of a carryover and maybe you have to read my mind. But it's the resources at home that teachers, you know, they, they need either books or digital versions or whatever, but the stuff that's available at home and what the students have at home through IXL are, you know, self-directed videos that they should watch if they are having trouble.
Mm-hmm.
Not the same textbook that they opened up with Ms. Martin earlier in the day and they, they saw that page earlier and it was sort of a review, oh, yeah, this is the thing I saw earlier. I remember what she said because I can sort of hear her right now in my, in my dining room, right? And those are the types of resources I, I'm, I'm encouraging the district to look into, like, physical things. Maybe it's enough books to go home and back and forth or.
Correct.
You know?
So I'll just, I'll speak to it and I don't want to go too far over, but our, so our eighth, our eighth graders, the workbooks they have is their textbook as well. So that's a one and all. And then for our Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry, we purchased a set of textbooks, one set for each class. So if you are a student who does need that paper, that you can take one home. And then they also have digital licenses where they can access the textbook within the platform and use that as a resource as well. Now, again, we're really starting to really implement and really use those resources in helping support staff. So that might be more coming, that you'll see more of that. But we do have those resources to help support students. And again, I would say, reach out to your child's teacher if they need something different because we do, you know, Chris and I work closely, say, what resources do students need? And then we will work with families so they have that entry point that makes them comfortable that, that helps them access the curriculum.
And that's where I'll stop, Kyle.
Okay.
You're welcome.
And like, and like I said, this is something that we, when we go forward with review, that this will be an ongoing conversation, just in general, of how we're meeting the needs of our mass students. Can't thank you guys enough. Thank you. Enjoy your kids.
Thank you.
A little jealous. Thank you, Ms. Capitano.
And I'll also throw my thanks out. So one of the things that we're trying to do is to have our unsung hero teachers that are in the classroom every day, teaching number sense, teaching, you know, math facts, come and present how, how are they doing that? What are the strategies that they use? What do they have available to them? And so I appreciate Kate and Annie and Faith coming out tonight to present to everybody, Kyle, who helped to put this together. I think this was a topic at a faculty meeting in terms of how do we, how do we help tell this story? And I've also talked with the HDA leadership about, you know, it's, it's making sure that regular classroom teachers are also being heard in terms of what their needs are in the classroom. So again, I appreciate everybody who took the time tonight to come out and to, to share that story with the committee.
Wonderful.
All right. So now we're going to shift over to a budget manual and I'm going to pass the torch over to Diane, who's going to lead us through the manual and, and kind of where we are with this in our budget development process, which is kicking off right about now. And we're in the process of building some priority areas that we'll be bringing forward, but Diane will take it from here.
Yeah, so this is in your packet, the FY27 Budget Development Handbook. It's our template for how we develop the budget each year. It outlines the whole process. And then you'll see a timeline and I would just point out the note at the bottom that all dates are subject to change because we already have our budget hearing date, which was originally scheduled for tomorrow, is pushed off till next week. So, but this is just a template of the typical process that we follow. Budget development begins early in the fall each year where each principal and school is meeting with staff, determining what, what we have currently that's working, what maybe we want to tweak, what we're looking to develop for the following year. The process, like I said, starts in September and flows through until May, when it's voted on at town meeting. From now, from, well, January, we'll present the budget to, the initial budget to school committee in January. And from January until May, we'll talk budget at every meeting. So there's plenty of opportunity to tweak things, ask questions, grow things. But it's a collaborative process that starts with staff and comes, ends with school committee voting the budget and then town meeting and the whole town community voting the budget. So in the packet, you'll just see some of the forms we ask specifically for if there's a new program or course request. We kind of ask for a little reasoning why and what, what brought that about. We ask any textbooks or license incre, uh, new renewals, license renewals. We just ask for that spelled out. Special supplies, you know, we're not looking for the pens and pencils. We're looking for supplies that may support a new class or, you know, if we're looking to expand a class, some new licenses of classes. And then just any thoughts, if there's any thoughts on staffing changes, we just ask for that to be brought forward. So that's in a nutshell, a very quick overview of the budget development process. More to come at every meeting. But anybody have any questions on?
Can you, can you flag, I was just looking at the timeline here.
Mm-hmm.
Which, if, if there are members of the public that have thoughts and would like to share them with us, what, what are the dates that are the, the right time for them to do that?
So, again, all dates are subject to change.
Right. Thanks.
But I would say, keep an eye on the agendas.
Okay.
But right, according to the timeline, January 12th is when we have initial budget presentation.
Okay.
So that will be the main overview. And then we'll highlight different areas of the budget at, at other. So I would say, keep an eye on the budget agendas and we'll name which areas we're highlighting at each meeting.
This is something, you know, the, the, the budget creation and the budget oversight under your leadership with Dr. Judd has been something that is a real point of pride. I, again, just, you know, even as you have conversations at Thanksgiving with folks from other districts and hearing the, the stories that, the horror stories that we are not a part of has been, has been really great. And I, and I just, I, I'm excited to continue the process that we've used. Excited to invite community members who, who have thoughts and, and want to share that with us. So all that to say.
Thank you for that. But I also just want to thank the community as a whole because they've been very supportive of the school system.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate that.
We appreciate that. Any questions, comments, concerns from the school committee about this timeline or the process?
It's probably one of the biggest questions I get outside of here, which obviously we don't disclose anything, but if there's any way to let people in the community know, whether through the whole time, is there some other way that this is, to now and January, early January?
Yep.
Come to the meetings, the agenda, look at where the spending is. Come with you questions or you have ideas. I think that's very, very important. We saw somebody in the musical, Brendan, English and all the people looking to get involved or looking to question or see what, what, what we're spending our money on.
Yep.
However, you can highlight that would be great.
I think that's a great reminder. And also just to say as well, like, everything that happens with our budget is, is public information. Like, we are not, there's no, there's no behind the scenes, there's no, there's, there's nothing in my back pocket. Keep trying. But yeah, and actually Maggie, that makes me wonder if maybe we even use some of our social media or make sure everything is on the website as well. Folks can always find what we're talking about on the district website.
Is there a deadline for if, you know, if, if I had a pet project and I wanted to go find a grant? Is there a deadline for that to be submitted or will grant funding can be accepted at any time regardless of budget? Is that?
Yeah.
Highlighting my.
Yeah. No, grant funding can be, but it can be approved at any point, but the school committee does have to approve any grant money that comes in.
Well, sadly, I don't have a grant in my back pocket.
I was so excited.
I know. I was like, we're all on the edge of our seat. What do you got?
I guess that were true, but, all right. Thank you for that clarification, though.
Yeah, great.
There's budget though and then there's art if possible, right? And I keep on asking this question, like, if we had X amount of money, what would we like to do? And I'd like this to keep that, like, we obviously have our budget, which, you know, since I had a finance person, it doesn't change too much over years, I assume, unless something drastic were to happen. But if we, you know, if we carve out a bit more money or do fundraising or get grants or talk to people and get an influx of money, I, I'm just curious, what would we do or could we do? Would we do student initiatives? I heard that also teacher during his master's in Christine, like, oh, wow, awesome. Fantastic to do something like that or robotics, computers, whatever, you know, something that would make an ocean, something with the ocean would be so cool that we went on the map for something like that. Not just the bog standard, which we have to do is very important, but like, if we just stretched ourselves.
What's the next thing?
Yeah.
I mean, it's discussions that we have all the time as a leadership team, looking for what makes health public schools unique? What's that extra thing that we can do and be? We don't have that money tree at the moment, but, you know, but it's discussions, and if that is something that we really want, how do we make that happen? Whether it's budget, whether it's grant opportunities, whatever it is. I don't, I don't have what is the next best thing for the health of the schools right now, but it's things that leadership talks about.
Yeah. And, and there are things, I mean, Dr. Judd has lots of, of, of things up his sleeve as well in terms of expanding our, our pathways to college and career readiness. You know, some of the ocean things that you were talking about, the robotics, like, those are pieces also there's, you know, I think there's lots of ideas out there and I, I think there's actually also a, a very good track record of, of whole public school folks going out and finding, you know, opportunities for our, our students to be part of CSIR. Is that right? Did I?
CSIR.
Thanks. Right? With, and, and just lots of opportunities. I do think we have a very good history of finding grant money and, and, and making things happen outside of what we know to be a federally shrinking budget. And so, you know, just, just naming that. I also just, I think that this is a perfect time to mention as well, we, here in a minute, we're going to give our subcommittee update, our budget subcommittee met today, and one of the things that we've talked about is potentially at the next meeting, if not, the early in January meeting, actually Diane going through a little bit of how our schools are funded, school funding 101, so that everyone is on the same page for where our money comes from and what that looks like. So, tune in. How'd it do?
Okay. No, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, that was my, like, plug. Same time, two weeks. Anyway, okay, sorry. Kyle's show is over. Next?
So, next up, there's actually two items here that I'm going to seek committee input on, because really, it was brought forward by our chair and vice chair. So, the updated approach to subcommittees, and then, an introduction to a school committee goal statement. So, these topics are here on the agenda, but I'm going to turn that over and let you lead how you want to handle those two topics.
I'll pass that directly after.
Well, thank you. So, to the board, we met, I met with Mike, Dr. Jettie, and with Kyle, and we talked about how the school committee could take more of a structured, goal-lined approach to our subcommittees. So, you'll see on the agenda item 7.5, that we could begin by identifying and adopting our overall goals for the year as a school board, and the goals will serve as the foundation for all our subcommittee planning. So, once our goals are set, if you agree with what I've listed here, we'll develop, each subcommittee will develop their own set of goals and action steps directly supporting the committee's priorities. So, the updated approach is intended to strengthen and align across the committee, improve efficiency, and ensure that each subcommittee is contributing in a meaningful way to our shared outcome for the district. Just looking at our old subcommittees and just reflecting on what they all stood for, what part of our school board, as a school board, what are we contributing to those subcommittees? So, I think, foundationally, if we could set our goals, I added a few comments as well, just to kind of update what I was thinking here, but if we can look at the drafts and perhaps, I don't know if we have to vote on this. Yeah, so, it's just a presentation to the board as far as what our goals could be, and once we agree to these, we can then really iron out what our subcommittees are, and what they stand for, and what those subcommittee goals are, and how we'll be most effective as a committee.
Yeah, thank you, Lily. I would just, maybe just, I feel the need to explain a little bit to the board that when we met in, at our summer retreat, we talked a little bit about, you know, we put together our subcommittees and we thought we had a plan forward. At the MASC, MAS joint conference two weeks ago, Maggie and I got more information about the parameters for our subcommittees, and it turns out that we were out of alignment in a couple of ways. And so, thank you to Lily for putting down sort of what we think is the high level of these, you know, if these are our school committee goals, then we would have our subcommittees that would be in support of those. So, that's sort of why now, and how we got to this moment, just to be really clear, because, yes, we did think we had this in the bag. Turned out, we did not.
I don't think it's straying too far.
I don't either.
I think we're still, it's still pretty aligned, but I think having each subcommittee create their own set of goals, and aligning with what our school committee goals overall, that way, it just, it'll make more sense in the end, when you're off at your budget subcommittee, and you understand that these are our goals, and you're constantly referring back to them.
So, I wonder if it would be helpful if we actually just put them to voice, like, if, you know, I mean, I'm, okay.
But I did make comments on two and four, so, I don't know if you want to pre-read those, because I'm not sure, I just reworded them.
Gotcha. Okay, why don't you put them to voice, with the intention being, and this is the process that I would propose here, is let's, is that we listen and we react to them today, just now, and then, use, you know, we'll finalize them, I think, at our next meeting, if that's okay, just if there's any changes that need to be made. Does that sound right, process?
The only recommendation I have, and maybe I'm missing a beat or two, but shouldn't the school committee and the subcommittee goals essentially tie back to the, either the Dr. Jettie's goals, or the, might say something?
No, I agree.
Polemical, what is controversial in Spanish. You know what I mean, though? Like, whatever the overarching, if this were a company, because that's where I work, in corporate, if this were a company, you'd see what a company goes, and then, we'd go, okay, then the subcommittee are part of that company, and then, we're part of that, so they all tie back to each other. That's my only, the part that I'm missing.
I think the only, the only reason that I feel comfortable not completely following that cascade is that the school committee does operate separately from the school district themselves. So, Dr. Jettie and his admin team have clear goals that they're working for in terms of, like, student outcomes and whatnot. We, as an elected committee, I think, also have an obligation to our voter base to say, this is what we stand for and what we are going to be supporting. I don't think there's any, there's no, I mean, I don't think we're going to find anything that is separate from the support that Dr. Jettie needs, but we would always have, you know, an ad hoc committee that can support him if there is something that we've missed. So, basically, we're talking about just, you know, five, high level, this is what our, you know, what we're saying to the community.
Sure.
We are working towards, this is how we're spending our time and our energy on these five things. Want to tell the community?
Oh, sure. So, first one would be student achievement and learning environment, which, do you want me to elaborate? Support equitable, high-quality instruction for all students, and regularly monitor progress toward established academic benchmarks. Number two would be communication.
Lily, just to take that point further, so, if that's a goal of the school committee, right, I can see how that then feeds down to the budget committee with, you know, supporting the acquisition of, and advocating with the public, right? And then, part of our strategic plan is to make sure the students are provided with high-quality instructional materials. So, you know, you could, you see how the layer starts to emerge out of that, and so, it's, you know, as we sort of get all these pieces aligned, I think it's going to line up very nicely. And then, my goal is, you know, what's my personal goal, is to support that in the schools, make sure the principals have the tools they need, the curriculum director has the tools that are necessary, special ed has the tools that are necessary, right? So, I think it all starts to gel, and I won't interrupt you on two through five, because I think people can begin to see how that sort of, that hierarchy starts to emerge out of the way this will operate.
I think that's a good pause to actually see, you know, so you can start, as you're listening to it or you're reading it, you can start to see where your subcommittees would fall into place.
And when there's a student achievement subcommittee, it also lines up. The goals may be different from what the budget is doing to support that, but it's all tied, it's really all tied together, so, all right. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you're good. Communication and community engagement. Encourage consistent communication and feedback in partnership with administration, families and residents, to keep schools connected to the community they serve. Budget and resource stewardship. Ensure responsible oversight of the district budget and advocate for the resources necessary to sustain high-quality educational programming. Number four is committee governance and professional practice. Improve the effectiveness of the school committee through adherence to norms, efficient meeting practices, and the regular review and evaluation of school committee policies and committee performance. And five is superintendent evaluation and support. Conduct a fair, data-informed annual evaluation of the superintendent, and maintain a collaborative working relationship that advances district goals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I would invite any questions, comments, or concerns to that now, otherwise, I think you could just kind of marinate in it and let us, you know, share with us at any point, any questions or thoughts that come up. And I feel like this does a nice job, these do a nice job, of getting a little bit tighter in specifically what it is that the school committee does and does not do, because this really does speak to our big, our big purview topics, which are, right, the budget, resource, stewardship, policy and practice, superintendent evaluation. Okay. Anything else? Anything from the group?
I'm good.
Okay, so, then, next week, or two weeks from now, we'll take a look. Thank you, Lily.
You're welcome.
All right. So, that brings us to 7.6 on the South Shore Educational Collaborative Capital Reserve Account. If you recall, at the last meeting, Executive Director Loesch was with us. He brought forth this proposal that they are hoping to have support from all of the member towns to establish this fund, a capital reserve account or stabilization fund. He explained the mechanism to fund that, and so, he's looking tonight for a vote. I had checked in with him earlier in the day, and he has been to three, or four communities so far. Three have voted to support this, so he is waiting for our vote, and he continues his tour through the rest of the schools on the South Shore. So, he has to get to, I can't remember, I think in here it says there's a certain number of districts that need to support this, but he's hoping that Hull will be supportive with a vote tonight.
So, with that, is there any more discussion or follow-up thoughts from our last meeting about whether or not we can move forward with the vote?
So, it seems this vote is literally just so he can open the account, that we'll have no money in it.
Yes.
However, my question is to do with, and Dr. Jettie, maybe you can answer this, they're not going to ask for additional money, they're not going to ask for fees on top of current tuitions, they're just hoping that the current tuition point will allow enough extra to eventually feed this fund.
That is my understanding, that they will, they will make their best guess on what it will cost to fund the collaborative. They'll charge that back to the towns. If there is money left over, in the past, that money's been returned, they will through...
There has been refunding, the past.
If, well, I'm looking at Diane, but, you know, they sort of operate on, my understanding is it's like our operation, there's a total budget, and that if they have funds that are left over, it gets carried over to the next year as a, we don't need to collect that, because we already have it, right? This will allow them to put some of that money, and again, it'll be the board that will make that decision, which are all the superintendents who are in the collaborative, will be making a vote to, we're going to put this amount of money into the stabilization fund. So, it will be funded from, you know, if they have savings with personnel costs, for example, they would be able to say, instead of returning all of that, we're going to park some of that, because we've got projects that need to be funded over.
I understand that, but do school districts have surplus? It's just such an unheard-of idea, that tuitions will not be increased in order to fund this account, that there will be a surplus.
I think one of the things is their enrollment projections change. So, they may estimate they're going, you know, to have 20 students.
Yes.
And they may end up with 23. So, those three extra students are additional revenue that they didn't budget for.
Okay.
I think that was...
I would vote to allow them to have an account, but I don't want Hull to lose them as part of our community if they have the money to buy their own building one day. And what district has extra? I know that you just gave an example, so, I need to...
But they're funded differently than...
Our budget.
I see.
Like...
We go to the public, right? And we ask the community of Hull to support the Hull Public Schools, because they're a collaborative that overlays on top of nine districts. They're coming to us to say, we're running these services, right, and so, we need the support of the nine districts in order to keep that going. They don't own their building, they're leasing their buildings, so they've got, you know, we own buildings, we have upkeep that we need to have, their needs shift and change.
Our budget depends on them also, because they're our tenants, essentially.
Yeah, but I also think, I heard crystal clear that they intend to stay in Hull for a long time.
I heard that, too.
That the programs that are running here, that are revenue-producing for us, are working really well. There are students who are integrated into the high school, that they have no intention of going to a more, you know, an environment where they don't have access to what we have available for them. So, I'm not worried about that partnership based upon the current situation, and, you know, we have the, we have the space to be able to accommodate the program. So, I think this is a partnership that's going to, well, it has been in place for a while, and it will continue from what I'm hearing. This will just allow them, there are students who, for a variety of reasons, are at a, at the collaborative school, and that's the appropriate placement for them, and they need to be able to make sure that they keep that going also. Some of those are our students.
Well, regardless of where they sleep at night, they are our students, they're in our community.
Okay, so, with that, is there, I'm looking for a motion to take a vote, to approve, I guess, I'm looking for a motion, if there is one, to approve the capital reserve account request from the South Shore Collaborative.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Eliza has put forward a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Courtney, second. All those in favor of approving that account, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, unanimous, great. We love the collaborative.
Excellent, thank you for that. Just for the five-minute update on school safety, just want to remind folks that we are now in the winter season, and we are dodging a bullet tomorrow, because there's a nice nor'easter coming up. There are 31 school districts already closed tomorrow, but they're all out west, and there are 500 closed in New Hampshire, because it's all up north. But for us, we're going to, we're going to be in a rainy day in Hull, so it's going to be like many other days, so. But you should know that we had all the safety things in place, we have procedures that we rely upon, monitoring the weather, knowing where we stand is definitely a key part of that. The call on whether to close school or keep them open, it's always a student safety call. And I rely on the team that is here to sort of help keep an eye on that, folks who know the weather of the peninsula far better than I do at this point. I got pretty good at snowstorms. Now, I have to think a little differently with high tides and other things, so, I just want to ensure everybody that, you know, we do have all the things that are in place, our procedures are, have proven to be good over time, and we're going to continue to do that, and make sure that we're doing what's right for students and our staff who have to transport in, so. So, that's my five-minute safety update, and...
And will you be sharing your personal cell phone number for parents and students that have input on those snow days?
I think the best is to email me.
To email you?
Yes, I will take email. I'm not sure phone calls at 5:00 a.m.
I think they should do it the night before.
My favorite story was a superintendent who got a call that said, I want to talk to the idiot who decided to keep schools open today. And he's like, you got me. So, you know, everybody, there is no such thing as the right decision when it comes to these things, but it is always based on safety, and that's just a good reminder for everybody.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay, fantastic. Then, let's, we're going to shift gears then to our next agenda item, which is school committee policy issues. We have a policy IKF, which is the graduation requirements, that is here for a second reading. I'm, I think, before we move it forward to a third reading, we would just invite, if there's further discussion based on our conversation at the last meeting, any additional thoughts? I'll kick us off. I'll kick us off and say, just in case the committee hasn't seen it, literally today, Maura Healy put forward an initial, an initial recommendation about graduation requirements in the state, and they were very much in line with what we had heard from Dr. Shaw at our last meeting, with a couple, I think, notable exceptions, maybe not notable exceptions, but there, at the very least, the final recommendation and the final guidance will not be out from... at the very least, the final recommendation and the final guidance will not be out from, from her office until June. So that, that's a bit of a, I don't know, I guess it was a picture. I was excited to see, and I don't know if you, if anyone has read it, besides me, but I was excited to see a capstone project element to it, which I, I think would be fantastic and also the, the financial literacy component that she's moving forward. Anyway. Any additional conversation from last?
Is, is Hull interested at all in, in pathways? You know, like a capstone project pathway or the traditional pathway, things like that? I mean, we have an incredible opportunity in a town this size where we have, you know, fifty-six graduates or-ish. And they could each have something personalized that celebrates them as a whole human and their competencies academically. I, I would just love to see outside-the-box thinking and how we can make Hull special. I know New Hampshire has a lot of high schools, public high schools, who have unique programming graduation requirements. They're really exciting if you look into them, actually. We have the ocean here, I'd love to see something that takes advantage of our geography, our small class sizes. I don't know.
I think, I, I think, I think there's an appetite, well, I don't, I don't speak for the entire venue, but I, I agree with you. I think that something, like some application of learning would be a really powerful, I don't know, indicator of, of acquired standards, I guess. I don't know if there had to be a less jargony way to say that, but-
I'd love to see, so years ago, my daughter did an IXL where she was asked to measure fish with a, with a measuring tape on the computer screen and she did it with, you know, I'm sure a hundred percent accuracy. The other day, I asked her to measure my living room while I was at a furniture store to see if a couch would fit and she could not manipulate the ruler. Twenty minutes, I kid you not. But I'd love to see a hands-on option for those who are so inclined, you know, like to touch and do and build things, whatever that is, as an option. Not everybody, of course, I mean, we've got varied learners, but-
Is it something we can take offline? Because I know there are things, like the boat building and other stuff at the-
So many things that this town has that we can-
That's potential.
For sure. And I know it's a much longer conversation than I'm sure anybody wants to have tonight, but I, I would love to see something special in this town.
I think there are things in the works about individualized career, like my cap is a program.
Yes, like, but let's pull those in.
Yeah, it's, we're getting there.
I think part of this too, we've been waiting for this interim report to come out and-
Yes.
It's not finalized yet, it'll be out in June, but clarified for me, we, we were not sure how to interpret capstone. We didn't know if it was a course capstone or if it was a capstone project.
Yeah.
And now we know, they're talking about a senior project. They're talking about a end-of-high-school culmination that students engage in. And so I think that's fabulous. It gives us so many possibilities. We can work closely with teachers, we can align it to what the expectations are for our graduates. But now that we understand that, it, you know, this, the graduation requirements are going to continue to morph. This version is sort of reactive to the vote over MCAS, so we have to have something. And so we're reacting here and this is what we're going to do. And now we've got this aspirational document that's come out and it's gonna frame things that will allow us to really take it to the next level. So stay tuned, because I think all of that is to come. But I, I read it this afternoon, I think right after lunch, I saw that that had come out and I jumped in, but it's a meaty document.
Yeah, I haven't had the chance to look at it.
And so, you know, we'll, we'll keep unpacking it as a team and figuring out what the steps are.
So, and I, and so let me maybe draw a little bit of the fork in the road that, that we're at right now, is that, that is the aspirational direction, right? We're, we're getting the recommendation for graduation requirements at the state level. We have, I think, higher expectations than even the state level typically. Like, we want our students to have opportunities to, to do things even, you know, beyond just the state recommendation. The fork that we're in right now, though, is this moment right now of class of twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven and how we're, you know, class of twenty twenty-six and class of twenty twenty-seven, I should, I should clarify. And, and how we're going, how they're going to demonstrate that they have achieved the requirements for graduation and that we would feel confident that they're ready to go on into the world.
And that's what IKF is addressing.
And that is what IKF is addressing. No changes have been made to IKF that I saw, right? I mean, we're, we're at the same place.
I believe Maggie accepted all of the editorial changes, including the one that I verbally shared, but there was a change to the heading.
Okay. Okay.
Are we, I'm sorry, are we, in the letter or in the packet that Maura Healy put forward, there's a ton of recommendations. So we're kind of following along with that. And were we talking about capstone and portfolios? But that is in addition to some kind of a state test that they're requiring or that they're putting forward as a recommendation?
My, my read of that is that they've migrated away from this idea of a state test. So even the capstone project, they're saying the local control is, you design that. But it is intended to be a competency determination, is the way I read it. And that each location can figure that out. So for example, if we were to say that there had to be an element related to the ocean because of where we live, our geography, we could figure out how to incorporate that into our local project. So I, I think all of this is talking, conversation that we can engage in going forward to figure out how to get this right.
And I think you're hearing from us that we're very excited about the idea of capstone, any, any sort of applied learning demonstration. That feels, that feels exciting to me and-
Options, right?
As an option.
Right, options.
Not as everybody must.
Yeah, totally.
Because I don't, I think that that's just as terrible for some kids as taking a standardized test is for others. I think options are important.
I, I want to read that again because I'm not sure that that's an option.
It was an option.
That's, that's-
No, it's, it's, it's both.
That's saying you will develop a capstone project. Now, the elements of it-
But that doesn't mean, yeah.
Yeah, the elements of it are for us to control. So the state's not gonna come in and say, it has to do the following, right? But that there, that a capstone project, a culminating experience is part of competency determination.
Could it be that there are three or four capstone projects and you choose one?
It, it could be totally open-ended. You know, students could literally select their own research question.
Yeah.
What are they interested in? And then they guide their own learning with that. That's, I mean, I, I think that's where the possibility lies.
Yeah.
And then the flip side, which is the urgent piece that we're addressing right now, which is policy IKF and the graduation requirements that are short-term right now, irrelevant of what the Healy administration comes out and says, we still have to have something for this, this, this grade level.
The, the obstacle I'm having trouble getting over is that students are required to, to take a course load with an X number of credits required for graduation in several categories and they've done that and they've passed all the classes. But there's this extra competency thing where then we have to look at their last final exam from some of those classes, not all of them, just some, a couple that we picked. Why? Why not, if they did the courses and got a passing grade and they did the number of credits required, why not, why is that not enough? Is it a state mandate that we then have to look at a particular assessment?
That is, that is one of their, that is their recommendation.
But not a requirement.
I don't think it's a requirement.
So the aspirational document is really forward-looking. It's students that are rising through the system. The guidance we have relative to current seniors who took the MCAS when it was allowed and most students, you know, showed that competency by the score they got. And then they have said that, you know, we've always had the ability to have individual plans for students that didn't check the box. And so they're saying, here are the things that you can look at to check that box.
It's sort of making, it's sort of making your final assessment on Algebra One that you took a long time ago, it's turning that into part of an MCAS. It's saying, okay, this should have been standardized, it's not, but good enough for this one year. Why are we looking at that extra piece? Why not just the fact that the kid passed that class in general? Why is that not sufficient that he has mastered at least enough of Algebra One to say, good enough for this one year?
Well, and, and what we're saying is, we're looking at the final exam because they've asked us to do that. We're also looking at the fact that they went on to take geometry, Algebra Two and more advanced maths.
Why the test?
Again, that was, that was part of the direction that we had from-
So that, that's my beef with it, is that, that we're, the final grade for the course is not sufficient, according to the IKF I'm looking at. It's the, the final grade plus all the credits that are required of everybody, plus on a couple of courses, we want to look at that last test. Which seems, it doesn't make sense to me. I think we all agree with you.
I do.
I do.
And for a variety of reasons, we understand that. I mean, the tests weren't developed with that in mind. There are a variety of reasons why that doesn't sit well, but it's part of the guidance that we've been given.
But if it's not required, we can not follow it. If it's a recommendation and not a requirement, then, or maybe I'm wrong.
I, I think is, I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to vote on it and, and make our own decision. But I completely agree with you. I don't, I, I, I cannot, and I, and I struggle with this a little bit because I know and I hear loudly, loud and clear that there's a path forward for all of our students. So in some ways, I feel like I'm, maybe I'm just being difficult, but I feel like the foundation of what we put forward now is what we build on. And I, I, I just don't, for class of twenty twenty-six, I, I, I can't imagine there's a world where I would ever feel comfortable declaring that their eligibility for graduation has something to do with a test that nobody knew was going to be an issue years ago. Like that-
And randomly selected, even, even worse. Like, like it might be the one that they would put forward.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I, I have serious issues with that. I think the rest of the South Shore is vanilla to me. I feel like Hull is probably one of the only towns that stands out, that's different, it's got different DNA and everything. And their education system, not system, our education and that the, what the kids who are pushing out into the world should reflect that. Like, you have kids who are very academic, you have kids who are very artistic, et cetera, et cetera. We, we need to be able to provide a, a system and prepare them for life. And I, I was thinking about this today, I was thinking about a friend of mine, an artist, I remember I was at school, he'd like, he was flunking everything, flunking everything. And he's probably one of the most, every anime kind of cartoon type of thing you see on TV and Hollywood, he's one of the main producers today, but he could not do school. And, you know, that's the type of people, we should be, it should be as easy for him to get through as it is for somebody who's getting straight A's because they're all going to be famous in different ways.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm not in any way suggesting that we're not holding all of our students to the same level of high expectations. And neither are you, I'm not, I'm not implying that's what you're saying at all, Brendan. I'm just, I'm just saying that I want to give our teachers and their students the opportunity to be working towards a shared goal and have the requirements in black and white before they're just all of a sudden, like a few years ago, pulled forward. So anyway, that's-
Let me say one, one last point and maybe a bit differently. I, and I might be reading too much into the tea leaves. I bet that they're trying to navigate these choppy waters and they don't, they don't know exactly what good looks like right now, but I've, I feel like if we put together a good plan that takes all of our different dynamic student base into account, I feel like with the right rationale behind it, they may approve it. Which would meet everybody's expectations.
I agree with you.
You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. They don't know what it looks like just yet.
Right.
But they're waiting for someone to figure it out and it's so many- They can say that, that's-
Actually, in the report, there are a lot of local examples that are provided. You know, they're looking at Portrait of the Graduate, they're looking at senior projects that exist, so they're, they're pointing out exemplars that they're hoping that others will, oh, we can do this, we can, we can take this and, and turn it into something. So I think our opportunity to really personalize this is, is right there. It's just, we have work to do.
But for this year.
Okay, so, yeah.
For this year, we, we need to graduate seniors.
So what's, so what's our path forward then, Mike? Is it, because what I'm inclined to say is that we, I mean, pushback here, right? Like, I don't know exactly the process, but what I would put forward is that we go back to IKF and we remove for the class of twenty twenty-six, the final exam condition in our policy. And then we, and then we can vote on, you know, we can vote on it next, and a, a final reading of it at our next meeting.
So long as they pass the course.
So long as they pass the course. And again, I don't think this hurts anyone, right?
Yeah, I, I think the thing I would just ask is to trust Principal Shaw, who has put this together. He has a plan for every single member of the class of twenty-six. And these, this list has allowed us to ensure that we've met the competency determination. And there's a plan in place, as there has always been for every child.
Of course.
And so, you know, this is put forth because it will allow us to be reactive to a, a vote that occurred and to make sure that our students are meeting the requirement. And then we have all that aspirational work to keep engaging in. So, you know, there, there is a plan for every single member in that class.
But there's two tracks, right? Dr. J, there's this year and then there's the art of the possible for the future years.
Absolutely.
So let's separate them, let's figure out this year's class.
And IKF is the reassurance to the, the students who are gonna march in six months, well, seven months. And then we'll keep, keep working at it.
So your, your advice to us is to go ahead, is to approve IKF as it is now? Because, to say it again, everybody, this doesn't harm any students. There are no students that are not going to graduate because of this additional, this final assessment criteria.
That is my understanding.
And that's my understanding too.
Just to be clear, there could be students who have other requirements that they're not meeting. But it's not, they're not being held back from graduation based upon this policy. So, so yes, that's why proceeding ahead with this, even though I don't like it one bit, the final exam piece. No, I don't. Because I, I can tell you a million reasons why, when, you know, somebody was writing that test four years ago, they weren't thinking of this.
Yeah.
So, but, put that aside.
And they wouldn't look for that either.
You know, put that aside, it still has allowed us to, to have a way to show that competency determination. So there's nobody that is being hurt by the updated IKF.
Then what would it matter if we removed it?
If we take that out, I'd have to, I'd have to run that by Principal Shaw to make sure that I understand. Would that force us to then find another way to show that possibly? And so there could be an unseen, unforeseen consequence to taking that out.
Well, if I understand correctly, we're not voting on this tonight anyway, so you could go back and get clarification before a vote is made.
Well, the, the original thing from DESI is we had to have this updated by December thirty-first. So this was read number two. And the next meeting in December would be read number three and would satisfy the DESI requirement. So that's why we laid this out in the three meetings that we did, so that we can meet the expectation.
I thought that we were gonna, this was gonna look different for this meeting. And I don't know what was changed. It, it looks the same to me.
Nothing was changed.
So I thought this was gonna be, the second reading was going to have the modifications that we talked about at the last meeting so that we could process this part of it now. But I don't see the change, I don't see the changes unless I'm missing something.
Well, the, the big change, I, I think a lot of the conversation last time focused on that final exam piece. And so that's a piece that, again, we, we continue to, the school committee can take that vote. But I just, I think it's important that I be able to go back to Rob to say, if that- "If that's removed, if, if you really want to remove that, what is the impact for the students in the class of 26?"
No pressure. So, if we don't vote on it tonight, we don't meet the DESI deadline. Is that the reality of it?
You could waive the third read and vote on it next meeting. You could call this a second read and say it's not in policy until it's been read the third time next time, but I would, I would need to know exactly what questions you want us to answer. So, I, I'll be honest, after the last meeting, I wasn't quite sure, we had a lot of dialogue, but I wasn't sure what modifications you wanted us to bring forward on it. So, we brought it forward in the same format minus all the strikes.
We're done with this one?
I, 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 my instinct, based on the conversation that I'm hearing, that I would invite my colleagues to weigh in on, is I feel like if, if you, if we had a version of IKF that didn't have that testing requirement, I understand there, there, it may not be feasible, there may be legal implications, there may be reasons why that doesn't make sense, but if we had that IKF without that assessment, I for one would have no problem supporting, supporting IKF in, in, in the rest of the content. What I would love, what I would love is if, here, here's an idea, here's an idea. I say, I would love to see, and I, I would love for you to have that conversation with Dr. Shaw. I'd love for, for you to do a little bit of exploring of where this, you know, with class of 2026, what flexibility we do have and what would happen if we take that out. If there is any feasible path forward, if you could bring us a version of that next year, or next year, at our next meeting, that has that piece removed, then I think we could waive our second reading and we could move forward with a vote in two weeks.
So, just, let's workshop this to make sure.
Okay.
So, under the section that says competency determination, item number two, so this is for the class of 26, item number two says, "Passing the following courses," we're all in agreement that passing the courses is necessary.
Yes.
"With a passing score on each of their related final assessments," you would be asking us to strike that part of the sentence?
Yes.
To remove the, okay.
Yes.
So, that's for the class of 26. The next piece then begins with the class of 27 and beyond, and it says, "Passing the courses and related final assessments." So, the class of 27 are the current juniors. Are you asking to strike that final exam piece there also? Because in some cases, that could go back, it could go back to ninth grade.
I, I don't, I think that if you've passed a course, you should get credit for that course as, as being competent enough. I don't think that the last test at the end says whether or not you did a great job for the entire course.
I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're going to get completely away from that end of course assessment. When we talk about the capstone and, and some of those other projects, though, that, that would be a part of end of course assessment. It doesn't have to be a test. So, although I, I have reservations about class of 2027 and beyond, I can, I can see that there could be a, like, that, I could at least see that being an option. I can't, in good conscience to class of 2026, say with no notice and six months.
Sure, you can see, though, that if, even for class of 27, if we're looking at final assessments that weren't written with that intention, that that's a problem. But if there's a, a final assessment that's written today with that intention for the future, that's different.
Yeah, I do see that.
And, so, I, I think our high school teachers would tell you that they're engaged in that dialogue now in PLCs, right?
Truly, yeah.
So, the idea that these exams have taken on a new meaning going forward, it, it's already dialogue that's taking place. So, so I think it will correct itself, but I, I can understand. I mean, so here's, here's another kick the can down the road. If we just do number two and strike that for the class of 26 and see where we land, that, we can revisit this again next year in terms of exactly the profile of the class.
Then that's exactly what I would love to see us explore. What are the ramifications from that?
I would like to explore it just after we approve 26, because I would like 27 to know what to expect, so we're not putting ourselves in the same position. You know, if, if this decision for 26 needs to be done immediately, then the very next meeting, we should finalize 27, so they have noticed, we don't put ourselves in this, behind the eight ball again.
I don't know if it's going to be the next meeting, but I agree with you. We start talking about, yeah, right. So, can you, yeah. Brendan, go ahead, Brendan.
I was going to say, I think we need to question our philosophy, too, because are we here so that somebody gets an A in a subject just to get the mark, or do we want to create curious minds and continuous learning? And I think everyone hopefully would agree that it's the latter, right? We, we want people to, you know, whatever they're learning in high school, go on to the third level or go on to, you know, jobs, regular jobs, whatever it is they decide to do, but that they have a good foundation. We shouldn't have so much emphasis on that grade. It should be more around, "Yeah, they did a great job and they had a great learning experience, and then because of that, they decided to go into the following."
Well, I think that's for the class of 28. Apparently, we don't care about that for 26, 27.
But that's the philosophy we need to, but there's a switch in philosophy.
27 and beyond.
Well, I think we do care, and yeah, and I think that becomes our, sort of our, our beacon and our, where we're headed, but what, and, and, and I think this, I think that this, we haven't, we haven't heard from you, so I don't, I'm not speaking for you, Lily, but it sounds like, it sounds like this particular school committee is not comfortable in saying, "End of course exams slash assessment for class of 2026," assuming it's not going to mean that we, you know, we invalidate our accreditation for the year or something.
Don't want to challenge it, at least.
Yeah, I, it's not, it's not, it's not worth, I mean, this is why I said, I, I'm sort of of two minds, because it's not, on the one hand, it's potentially not worth a big battle because we've already said, we already know that this is not going to be the deciding factor for whether or not some of our students graduate. I, I, I appreciate that and I understand that, and sort of out of, like, philosophical alignment with what Brendan said, and also respect for our teachers that didn't have that information, like, I'm, I'm inclined to, to, to say for the class of 2026, I feel, I, yeah, I, I would have to reserve...
Courtney, what do you think?
I'd like to know, like, there must be a reason other than, maybe it's just the state recommendation is the reason, but is there a reason that those, that item number two is in there? Like, you know, and...
You mean the final assessment?
Yeah.
I, I, I think part of it is so we could take the same challenge and say, you know, "What does it take to pass a course?" It is easy to average away a competency. You know, I can pass a class with a D and not know how to do something that's a competency, a core competency for that course. So, you know, unless you have some mechanism that says, "I have to be able to do these six things at the end of this course, and I have to check all six boxes," which is a competency-based grading, whole different concept, right? But, but you can average away a competency and not know how to do it. And so, I think what they're trying to say is with a final exam, now the same thing, I can pass the final exam and have flunked all the questions related to one competency. So, it's, we're kind of chasing our tail around that, but I love the dialogue, the aspirational dialogue of, "What is it we want all students to know and be able to do and demonstrate for us, and how do we ensure that they can do those items," right? So, you know, the capstone project can be a way to show that they have done all those pieces.
If, I'm thinking of the, it's a culmination of multiple things with a student, and when I think of final assessment, I don't necessarily think of a standardized test or anything like that. It's, it's a culmination of all the things. So, what did they learn? Whether our version of it in Hall is our students are able to demonstrate that they've been engaged in school, they've participated in extracurricular activities we provide, you know, and if our students, if they know what to, what's expected of them, and with the MYCAP and all of that, they will be prepared for outside of these walls, you know? And I think that, that is an assessment of some sort. I don't necessarily think that a, a test is going to give us that exact vision of what our students provide. So...
Okay. Courtney, do you have any, I want to make sure we give you...
Yeah, no, I'm in agreement.
Okay. Okay, so then, Mike, what I, what I think we're asking you to do is to, to, to have conversation with Dr. Shaw, see what, see what the ramifications, and if there is a pathway to remove that one, that one piece for the class of 2026. If so, we will, we will be, we will be prepared to vote for it, vote on it at our next meeting. If not, we'll have to vote on IKF as it exists now. Is that okay?
Yep, I got it.
Is that clear? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Okay, then I think now I'm ready to talk about a much less dramatic E policies. We've had three readings of EBC, EFBA, EFD, and EFE, which all, well, you've, you've read them, we've discussed them. Is there a motion to...
Yes, approve all of them at once.
Approve all of them at once? Okay, so move from Elisa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Lily. All those in favor of approving those E initiatives, policies, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, unanimous. E for the win. Quick, old business, there's just one old business, the Budget Subcommittee. Courtney, do you want to share a little bit of an update from the Budget Subcommittee?
Sure. So, prior to this meeting, the Budget Subcommittee, which consists of Mr. Jelli, Kyle, and myself, and Diane, so we all met, went over a few agenda items, we reviewed the year-to-date financials versus the budget, so we are in line with the expected budget of 18.39 million, so, which is good news, in line there. We also talked about kicking off the budget process for a year for 2027, and seems like we're set up for a good timeline.
All right. Yep. Thank you. And as always, those budget meetings, again, those are posted and shared, so. All right, we don't have any donations to accept.
Okay.
Yes?
The Hull Public School Wellness Council.
Uh-huh.
The document from Hull Public Schools is that the, the school committee voted itself to be part of the membership, so...
Okay, got it.
So, I attended. It was productive. Mr. Giglio had an agenda and we had great conversations, and I think the meeting must be continued still. We didn't get to all of the items, but it's work in progress and all the stakeholders were there.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending on our behalf.
Okay, any other, sorry, before I talk over anyone else. Sorry about that, Elisa. Okay, we've, we've, I think we're up to date with our warrants. Any new business or correspondence to or from school committee members?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, then, is there anyone that would like to make a motion to end our meeting at 8:54?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Lily. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Courtney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Long meeting, but we are officially adjourned.